Good evening, municipal city council meeting, September 4th meeting will come to order and the clerk will call the roll.
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee. Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
Four present, one absent.
At this time, we usually have a moment of silence and if you will, at this time, if you will remember this nation and your prayers and your thoughts, and if you will remember this governmental body as we make decisions for our community, and if you will remember those in dire need of assistance from this community, if you will silently pray or have meditation about these items, thank you. We will stand and have a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance.
Item one is consider approval of the agenda as presented. Mr. Shipley, do we have any adjustments to this agenda?
We need to withdraw item two.
Okay, then we will move to item three, four, five, six, which is consent agenda.
Ms. Vice Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Need a motion.
We need a motion. I need a motion.
Second.
And all vote please. Thank you.
Been awhile since you've done this.
That's right.
I think there's one more. Last one.
I thought it did. I did it. It didn't work.
Oh, you pushing the button. Four yes votes, motion carries.
You want me to try mine again?
Yeah, try yours again.
You need to clear it and then let them try it.
Okay, clear it now. I mean, go now.
Push your buttons.
Oh, all of them?
There's more than one way to keep me from voting.
Now you got four yes votes.
There you go. Thank you.
The last one coming up though.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Okay. All right, we'll start again.
We've been trying to save money by using these clickers.
We'll start again. All right, we now have voted on the adjusted agenda and we will now move to consent agenda, which consists of items three, four, five, and six. I will read those and you may follow along on the visual if you'd like. Set a date, that'd be for October 2nd of eight, for a public hearing on ordinance number 080916, which is closure and abandonment of a portion of an alley behind St. Michael's Episcopal Church located between East 6th and East 7th Streets. Item four, set a date, which would be October the 2nd of eight, for a public hearing on ordinance number 080917, historic overlay zoning for 105 East First Street, 115 204, 207, 210, 215, 360, 368, and 371 Cherry Avenue, and 206 and 216 Holly Avenue, and 115, 125, and 1237 East Fourth Street. Item five is set a date, which would be October 2nd of eight, for a public hearing on ordinance number 080918, rezoning a portion of 929 West Jackson Street from single-family and duplex residential to local commercial. And the last item, item six, is a consider awarding bids for transformers and wire. Are there any questions or discussion about any of these items, these four items?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion or other comments? All vote please. And now moving-
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And now moving to item seven, which is our first item of new business, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance number 080812, which is rezoning a portion of 724 and 742 East Spring Street from single-family residential to local commercial. Mr. Mills.
Vice Mayor and council members, the property being considered for rezoning is depicted on the screen. Here's an aerial view of the property. Proposed rezoning was initiated at the request of the property owner, Mr. Donnie Meadows. The subject properties are identified as parcels seventeen and eighteen on tax map 52O group B. According to a submitted survey, the two parcels consist of approximately 9.9 acres combined. Zoning of the properties is currently split with the front approximately 270 feet consisting of an est- which consists of an estimated 2.9 acre zoned SCL, and the remaining seven acres zoned as RS20. The properties, as you can see on the screen, are contiguous with RS20 zoning to the north, with RS20 and CL zoning to the east and west, and with CL zoning to the south. The portion of the property proposed for rezoning extends an additional 330 feet to the north consisting of approximately 3.7 acres. The total proposed area for CL zoning would extend approximately 600 feet from East Spring Street and would consist of an estimated 6.6 acres. At its closest point, the proposed CL zone line would be approximately 130 feet from the contiguous properties to the north. If the request is approved, the portion of the property that would remain as RS20 would consist of approximately 3.3 acres. Mr. Meadows has indicated in his rezoning petition that the purpose of the request is for a multifamily residential development. Multifamily residential is a use permitted in the CL zone. The minimum lot area requirement is 3,000 square feet per dwelling unit. With the portion of the subject properties already zoned as CL, 42 multifamily units could be constructed, could be constructed now. Rezoning of the additional, or the requested 3.7 acres would allow the location of an estimated additional 53 units for a total of approximately 95 units. Several issues were considered by the planning commission in the review of this request. The first was compliance with our comprehensive future land use plan. Land use plan indicates that the properties along East Spring Street would be best suited for commercial use. In the opinion of the planning department, the proposed rezoning would be in compliance with the plan, provided that the commercially zoned portions of the properties are not accessed from the low-density residential areas to the north. Next item that the planning commission looked at was the availability of infrastructure. Commercial and high-density residential developments should generally be located on major streets, whereas this is located on East Spring Street, which is US Highway 70 and is listed in our classification as a major arterial. The properties are served by a 10-inch water line along East Spring Street, and a public sewer force main is located along the northern boundary of the subject properties. There is some question as to the capacity of this force main to serve the number of multifamily developments, or units that could be developed on the property. Should it be determined that the capacity of this pump station can handle the planned development? The developer also has the option of installing a pump station and connecting to an existing gravity sewer main located approximately 1,000 feet west on East Spring Street. So, the planning commission determined that adequate infrastructure is available for this rezoning. The third issue that the planning commission looked at was impact on adjoining properties. The Burton Estate subdivision is contiguous to this development to the north. In the proposed rezoning, the northern 3.3 acres of this property, or these properties adjacent to the subdivision would remain zoned as RS20 and provide a significant buffer. And again, as I stated earlier, the CL zone line would be no closer than approximately 130 feet from the southern boundaries of the adjacent properties. Screening and buffering requirements would also have to be met. Driveway access from Rockwell Drive to the commercially zoned portions of the subject properties would be prohibited. The location of a sinkhole in the northeastern portion of the properties would also limit any development of the area that would remain zoned as RS20. And I'll go back to the aerial photograph. This area right up in here is a sinkhole area. And this is Rockwell Drive. A number of residents voiced their concerns at the planning commission meeting about the proposed development. The two primary concerns were drainage and access from Rockwell Drive. It was noted at the meeting that the city regulations prohibit any increase in the amount of stormwater leaving the site from pre-development to post-development. There can be no increase in the amount of water that leaves the site by code. It was also noted that while driveway access from Rockwell Drive to the commercially zoned portions of the property would be prohibited, an extension of Rockwell Drive as a city street would be possible. However, this extension would be difficult due to the aforementioned location of sinkholes at the northern end of the property. Also, at the planning commission meeting, Mr. Meadows stated that he had no intentions of accessing his properties from Rockwell Drive. Based on these findings, the proposed rezoning was approved by the planning commission and is recommended by the planning department.
All right, Chair will entertain a motion regarding this first reading.
Submove.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions or discussions?
Can you go back to the-
Aerial.
Yes. Where will the entrance to this be into this whole development?
It'll be from Spring Street. Of course, if you have more than 50 units, you have to have two ways in and out for a multifamily development. The preliminary site plan we looked at had a driveway through here and a driveway through here. Of course, we don't have a final site plan, but the access would be from Spring Street.
Both access?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The only comments that I have to make about it are, you've already voiced them, but I told several of the neighbors or the people in that, on Rockwell Drive, that I would voice these again from council. There was a huge concern, they didn't want Rockwell Drive extended, and of course, you mentioned the sinkhole and that that would make it difficult. And the drainage issue is an issue because apparently sometimes when it rains a lot, and you can't really see it from that picture, but there's a meadow on north, and it tends to retain water sometimes when there's a lot of rain. And then finally, and this I think is the most important part, is, or all of them are equally important, but folks were worried about the buffer zone and to make sure that there is a good buffer between the multifamily residents and the single-family residents. And that is a very established neighborhood. Old trees and lots of folks who've lived there 20-plus and more years than that. And so that was the only phone calls that I've gotten is regarding the things that you mentioned. It sounds like the planning commission has addressed those.
You did bring up one point that I failed to mention that was discussed, and Mr. Meadows is here if you have specific questions, but he did note that he had no intentions of removing any of the trees along the perimeter of the site. That was stated at the planning commission meeting, he can speak to that now. And let me say one other thing that, and I didn't bring the site plan or didn't place it on the screen, but we did have one at the planning commission meeting. And again, the reason why I didn't bring it, it's preliminary. The planning commission doesn't approve site plans, they can be changed. So, I didn't want to give you the impression that this is exactly how it's going to be developed. But it was noted that within the area that would be a buffer, the 150-foot strip through here, or 130-feet strip in here, is where a retention area would be in place. That, again, would assure that there's, help to assure there to be no development in that area and would ensure that you'd have a large landscaped area, 130 feet in width.
Do you, so is there going to be something built in the buffer, or houses or something at some point?
I've got a site plan here. Proposed site plan. I've got a proposed package that I'll be glad to give you about while we're doing. Of course, this is a proposed site plan subject to change from Mr. Mills' recommendation. But this is kind of what we're planning on doing.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's important to note, that while we had a site plan, we did not review it for compliance with the regulations.
They haven't done.
Yeah, it was just presented as an illustration of how it could be developed, you know, so there probably will have to be some changes.
What we're basically planning on doing is building a retention pond back in this area right here, which will help ensure that there won't be any development in that area there. Our intentions is not to develop this and to keep this as additional green space for the overall project. Our initial plans are for eighty-some odd units, possibly some, I'm looking to move my office out here, so I'm going to be living here myself. So, anybody want to buy a house for sale? But that's my plans is to come out here. We're going to do a nice development, and it'll be first-class, and we'll do something that the community will probably, it'll be, it won't be a low-interret property, it'll be a proud property.
And you speak of duplexes, these houses are in like duplex configuration here?
Uh-huh.
So, it's not all connected as apartments, it has separate units?
In essence, is this similar, James, I was thinking about, this is similar to what we did with the county as it relates to contraband, is it not? I mean-
In terms of the buffer area?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's real similar.
Yeah, because it was a 100-foot setback or buffer area between the back property lines and contraband and the commercial development that is, the EMS and I guess the health park.
It's fairly similar, except, you know, they did, the county did access from Lone Oak, and this has no access from any of the residential.
Well, they only access Lone Oak on emergency access.
Yeah, six and seven.
That's correct.
Gated emergency access.
Controlled. Controlled. Controlled.
And your parking areas that, there's parking area in there?
It's right here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Each, the proposal is that each unit would have its own parking there in front of it.
How does this differ than like Ploner's PRD?
Um-
Because it looks like, I mean, it's much different, it's not really, it's not an apartment complex at all, it's more of a little community.
It is.
So, would there, is there a benefit either way to it being PRD?
Well, Mr. Meadows and I discussed that. The PRD is a more cumbersome district to have to work through. You know, he can do the same thing he wants to in the CL. The PRD must have a definite plan to go by. I mean, we would support doing PRD, but he can do the same thing under both zones.
Okay.
Part of this, and I believe, Donnie, you correct me if I'm wrong, these will all still be rental units. They won't be individually owned, so they won't be individually, individual lots, like Councilman Shelton, so it's still classified as multifamily.
Oh, okay.
It'll be a four-rent project, but it'll be, the units will have nine-foot ceilings and aluminum flooring, and they're upgraded units. Much difficult.
Right. Looks like a nice development.
It does. Are any more comments from council, audience? Are there comments or questions that anyone in the audience would like to ask regarding this item? All right, we will accept your vote now. Your vote please.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
We'll pause here while we try to repair the loading machine.
Well, two of them are smart, two of them bigger than the other. I'll turn it over. When it got smart and unplugged it, it almost did it right there.
Perfect.
Here you go.
Knowledge.
We got college.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll be done with it, how's that?
You're so wise, Councilman Shelton.
All right, we're ready for item-
About six years will get you.
We're ready for item eight. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance numbers 080813, historic overlay zoning for property at 118 East First Street. Mr. Mills.
Vice Chairman and members, this is the location of the property. An aerial view. The request was submitted by the property owners, Mr. Craig Fickling and Ms. Melanie Madewell, for the historic overlay zoning, and they have specifically requested that the property be included in the North Dixie Avenue Historic District. The procedure for the establishment or expansion of a historic overlay zone is provided in our zoning code. The process requires the recommendation of the historic zoning and planning commissions and the approval of the city council. Additionally, the zoning code requires that two-thirds of the property owners proposed for historic overlay zoning favors such rezoning or zoning. And in this case, there's only one property, that requirement is met. The Historic Zoning Commission was required to determine that certain criteria were met. Located on the property is a single-family residential structure that's been converted to an attorney's office. According to the records of the Putnam County Property Searcher, the structure at this address was built in 1957. Federal and state guidelines for the minimum age requirement for a structure to be considered historic is 50 years, therefore, this structure would qualify as historic. The underlying zoning of this property is CN, Neighborhood Commercial. I think we're all familiar with the CN zone, it's a mixed-use zone in which single-family residential is meant to blend with limited commercial developments. A portion of the existing North Dixie Avenue Historic District is currently zoned as CN. The Historic Zoning and Planning Commissions have determined that the subject property complies with the requirements for historic overlay zoning and have recommended that it be included within the North Dixie Avenue Historic District. The planning department concurs with these recommendations.
Do I hear a motion to accept this on first reading?
Submove.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second. Now, discussion by council? Any questions by council or comments?
So, all this that we're going to do with on October 2nd for First Street and Cherry Avenue, does it surround that?
Yes. And I'm glad you brought that up, Councilman Shelton. The, what you'll be looking at next month, once you agreed or took for, set for a date for a public hearing earlier, stemmed from this rezoning. When the Historic Commission looked at this, there were several other residents from Cherry that came and indicated that they also wanted to be considered historic or be included in the Historic District. And Historic Zoning Commission asked the planning department to do a study. We looked at 34 properties, and what you set a date for tonight was what we came up with, which you'll be considering.
But it'll also be called the North Dix-
Yes.
It'll all be in that one?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I definitely think that the new owners of this property have done a great job in refurbishing it, and notice they're putting a new roof on it right now, and I think that that will help the neighborhood with it being CN, then the folks who live around it will have an office building that looks like a home. And it's very attractive what they've done.
Any other comments from council, audience? Are there questions or comments on this item from any of you in the audience? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item nine, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance number 080814, closure and abandonment of a portion of an undeveloped right-of-way of Popular Avenue. Once again, Mr. Mills.
Vice Chairman, Vice Mayor and members, this request was submitted by an adjoining property owner, Danny Frye, who owns property at 130 Popular Avenue. The subject portion of the undeveloped right-of-way is located between East 2nd Street and Craighead Drive and is adjacent to the eastern right-of-way of the Nashville and Eastern Railroad. The undeveloped right-of-way extends northward to East 4th Street. It has a surveyed width of 40 feet, and the portion requested for closure is approximately 210 feet in length. And that's depicted on the screen, the location. Here's an aerial view. Based on a survey submitted by Mr. Frye, a shed-type structure is partially located in the right-of-way as well as within the railroad right-of-way. And that's the structure right here. This is the farmer's market here, and this is the structure that is depicted as being half within our right-of-way and half within the railroad right-of-way. There's only one parcel contiguous with the portion of the undeveloped right-of-way proposed for closure and abandonment. That's parcel three on map 53B group G, again, the property at 130 Popular Avenue that's owned by Mr. Frye. There are specific procedures for the closure and abandonment of street or right-of-ways that are specified in Title 16 of the municipal code. Those procedures have been followed in this request. In April of 2007, to give you a little background, a similar request from Mr. Frye was denied by the planning commission. This denial was based primarily on a recommendation from the Public Works Department. Of concern at that time to the Public Works Department was the potential use of the right-of-way for the construction of a greenway through the area, and the possibility of Popular Avenue being extended at some point in the future. Mr. Frye's current request differs significantly from the 2007 request. In this request, Mr. Frye has requested that only one-half the width of the right-of-way, or 20 feet adjacent to his property, be closed, and that the remainder of the right-of-way be designated by the city as an alley. So, this proposal would leave a 20-foot strip, and he has requested that that 20-foot strip that would remain be designated as an alley. Designating the remainder as an alley would reduce the required building setback on Mr. Frye's contiguous property. Let me go to the next slide here. Mr. Frye owns this tract right here. This property has frontage on three streets, which require setbacks of 30 feet, which significantly limits the building area on that property. He's also requested that the undeveloped right-of-way of Craighead Drive adjacent to the northern boundary also be designated as an alley, which would likewise reduce the setbacks, and that's this section, which is also undeveloped.
Even though it went there.
Mr. Frye's request also differs in that he now agrees to permanently remove the existing structure partially located within the undeveloped street and railroad right-of-ways. The original request, he intended to refurbish the building and leave it there in our right-of-way and in the railroad's right-of-way. With the removal of the structure and the closure of only one-half the width of the right-of-way, the city would have the same approximate width that we could utilize. Again, currently 20 feet of it's taken up by the building, we still, we only have 20 feet now. If this request is approved, we would still have 20 feet that could be utilized for any future extension or any, a street extension or greenway construction. The request was reviewed by our city departments. Water and sewer and gas indicate they have no facilities within the right-of-way. The electric department indicates that the retention of a utility easement would be necessary if the right-of-way is closed and abandoned. They have a power pole that's located right in this corner right here, excuse me, right here, that serves the building that he has recently renovated, if you've been out there where he has his U-Haul rental. The Public Works Department also has approved the request as submitted. The planning commission recommended for the approval of the closure and abandonment of the portion of the undeveloped street right-of-way of Popular Avenue as requested, with the establishment of a minimum price based on the per-square-foot tax-appraised value of the adjacent property owned by Mr. Frye. Also, approval of designating the remainder of the undeveloped right-of-way of Popular Avenue and the undeveloped right-of-way of Craighead Drive's alleys, subject to the permanent removal of the structure located in the undeveloped right-of-way of Popular Avenue and to the retention of any utility easements as determined necessary. And the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
All right, do we have a motion?
No proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Questions or comments from council?
I have a question, and I don't know if it's, I think it's pertinent, so I'll just ask it. How did that piece of, how did that building get built in the right-of-way to begin with?
Just did.
Okay.
There are actually three or four that are that way in that same area, that are in the railroad right-of-way. Most of them now have leases with the railroad, but originally they didn't, so we don't, we don't know.
Okay.
But it's happened more than once in the same area.
Well, I definitely think that structure needs to be brought down. It looks, in the last few years, people have used it for graffiti, and I think they've gone in there and protected themselves from the wind and the rain and the cold. I'm not, nobody, to my knowledge, lives in there, but I think they definitely have used it as a place to congregate in the evening when nobody's looking. So, I definitely think that structure needs to come down.
I think that's why Mr. Shipley and I were, felt like this should something we should, you know, consider, and that's a big benefit in getting rid of that eyesore.
Right there next to the farmer's market, which is so pretty.
There's not any interference with the possible trail along roadside of the, along the railroad? That's not going to interfere in any way, or?
We don't think it will. If you can see here, this is the structure that's there now.
Mm-hmm.
It'll be removed, so the 20 feet would be right along where you probably would want to put the trail instead of going around the building.
Mm-hmm.
So, you still have the same amount of property that you would have, it just now would be more of a straight shot than what we currently-
But it's not going to interfere with Mr. Frye and his development or anything?
Well, we don't think so by, again, by declaring it as an alley, and that's what this ordinance would also do. He not only gains the additional 20 feet here, he also gets a reduction in 20 feet of the setbacks. He actually gets a 40-foot bonus in the building area. Now, if that is ever in the future turned into a street, then he'd be grandfathered in in terms of setbacks. But as an alley, he's fine. And we do have those, several in the city that are on alleys, and we do classify those as side and rear setbacks, which in this case would be 10 feet.
Any other questions or comments from council? Any comments or questions from the audience? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, Mr. Davidson's turn. He's got several items. Item 10, consider on first reading ordinance number 080919, amending Title 18, Chapter 1, Title 19, and Chapters 1 and 2 of the Cookeville Municipal Code relative to increase in application fees for utility services.
Vice Mayor and council members, in 1995, the city eliminated the requirement that individuals or businesses requesting utility service from the city put up a utility deposit. We went to a non-refundable application fee. And in '95, that fee was somewhere in the $35 to $40 range. In 2002, we raised those fees again, and I'm asking you again tonight to consider increasing that application fee. Currently, those fees are set for the Electric Department for residential customers at $25, and we would propose raising that to 45. For the Gas Department residential customer, that fee is currently $20. We propose raising that to 30. On the Water Department, it's a $15 fee currently and looking at raising it to $25. For small commercial accounts, the Electric Department currently has a fee there of $50. We're looking at increasing that to $100. The Gas Department, the Water Department do not currently have one of those for small commercial accounts, and we would propose that we implement an application fee for the small commercial for the gas of $60 and for the Water Department of $50. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you've got about the application fee process.
Do I hear a motion to accept this on first reading?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion, questions by council? Hearing none. Are there questions or comments from the audience? Yes, you've got the microphone.
Hi, I'm Deborah. First, I'd like to thank the staff for addressing my concerns. And I'm really grateful we're in a town, a city where staff and officials, you know, obviously really care about the city. My concern is that, and I'm certainly not saying it's done on purpose, but it seems like within the past six months, we are asking a certain segment of the population, in this case, quite a bit of overlap of that population, to carry a greater financial burden as a general group. And I understand that at this point in time, the debt of people skipping out and paying their bills needs to be covered, and this is the best system that you can find. And that no one is comfortable doing the alternative of if we change the exemption from taking that more people whose application fee, because they're waiting to tell, charging everyone double the application fee as opposed to a certain segment of the population that moves every year or every other year within first five years of establishing a record here. So, I just wanted to, what I consider to be, it tends to be renters, which is a trash thing, also impacting large, more largely. And the younger folks who first get out of your parents' home, you know, moving around is part of, you know, growing up, learning what kind of a new situation you want to be in, trying things, trying out apartments that don't work, you know, because we have good landlords and we also have landlords where you can't wait to get out. So, that was my concern. And so, you know, being a solution-oriented council and our faculty will, one thing that might help is, and this is really, may not be simple administratively, but maybe simple, too simple, like thought-life, is re-dated. Because application fees doesn't give the information that when you're planning to move, you need to budget to pay that fee again. And when everybody moves, they need to think about security, you know, first, last, and whatever you have to pay upfront. And so, you need to know you have that before you even start looking. So, no one's going to, you know, actively, and you need to sign, go back, let you move, going to say no when you come to the utility department. Customer search people are great, you know, but they're going to say, you need to pay this fee again. And it's not something you've known that you need to pay after the first time. So, that was just, and I realize, you know, having a huge student population, you know, the whole countdown thing is, can be really complex, that relationship. Okay.
Yes.
But I was just going to say, there's also enriching possibilities working together, so it's very worth it, you know, there's a lot of changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments that someone would like to make in regard to Deborah's, Ms. Tham's concern?
What's the cost of when someone comes in, other than no one physically goes out anywhere and does anything when they reapply, right? I mean, once they're turned on, they're turned on. It's like they're turned on at the-
When they're turned on at one location, we send service trucks out to that location. And when they come in and want to move to a new location, we send trucks out to the existing location to get the readings there to, so we can disconnect, not disconnect, we move them out of that location, and then we go to the new locations they're moving to. The truck goes there to get the readings there, so we know what to start their readings at, at the new location. So, we have that.
So, this, no one covers remotely even, I mean, it's a very small percentage that even covers any kind of cost?
Toward, toward the service part, sending the service people out there to get those readings. We have, we have a service fee. It's $10 per utility. And that's, we hope, covers that cost, but with fuel the way it is these days, I'm not so sure that it does. And we've talked about looking at that, but we just haven't, haven't brought that to you yet.
And when we have nothing in place, I know what she was specifically, I guess, referencing was somebody that pays their bills and then three or four, five years later, if they've moved two or three times, then they end up leaving or they move again, and we have nothing in place that would refund, because these aren't deposits anymore. These are going to become application fees only.
Their application fees are non-refundable. We have an exemption. She mentioned the exemption that we have. And we have one in the code that if a customer's there five years with a good paying, have established good paying history, we will exempt that fee after five years if they were to move at that point. We looked at cutting that back down, and that's when we, we determined at that point, if we cut the exemption back down to 18 months or so, basically what we would have to do, we feel, is the fee we're proposing now, basically doubling that, even making it even more. Instead of a $100 application fee for all three services, we're afraid it would have to go to $200 to basically establish the same revenue that we're looking at, trying to, to get to that number. And that's the reason we really hate to raise it any more than we have to. I think that was the original goal in '95, was deposits were, it was hard for some people to come up with a deposit, so we went to the application fee. It was lower. We've looked at going back to deposits, and we think if we do that, we're looking at a $400 to $500 deposit that people would have to put up front.
Fair minimum.
Yeah. And so, we think, it may not be perfect, but in, for the majority of the people, we think this is the best solution that we have.
Well, having children that live outside of Cookeville now in different states, and this is not nearly what it is equal to in other places of the country. And even in Nashville and even in Johnson City up at East Tennessee State University, you know, their, their fees were much more than this.
It seems to me if notification and education of that applicant to have their service turned on, if they are notified, I mean, if they're told then, if they're educated to the point then that, remember, if you move next year, when, if you've got a year's lease or something, if you move next year, this will, we will have to do this, you know, this application fee will apply. It seems that it may educate the person who tends to move more often. They would think they'll either save that money so they can have that fee paid, or it will discourage them from moving so soon. I'm sure our customer service tells them this, that they are going to have to have-
We tell people that it is a non-refundable fee and that they incur that when they move, and we explain the five-year exemption to them, but you might not think about it when you're looking at moving 12 months down the road or two years down the road.
All this information will be on our website, too.
Well, and I think-
That's good.
To restate the impetus for why this is all going on, this is a, this application fee is a revenue stream which helps us offset the cost of individuals that are delinquent or not paying on their bills. And so, it's just a redistribution of that funds in order to help cover the shortfall that the city is realizing when people don't pay their bills. So, we'd love not to have the app fees, because that means everyone's paying their bills, but unfortunately, it's not, it's not the case.
Any questions or comments from anyone? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Item 11, still Mr. Davidson. Consider resolution R. 0800920, initial resolution authorizing indebtedness of not to exceed $6 million for electrical distribution system improvements.
Vice Mayor and council, I have, in addition to this item, there's two other items on your agenda, item 12 and 13. Resolution number 080921 and resolution 080922. All three of these resolutions relate to this debt issue for the Electric Department. And if I may, I'd like to ask you to consider them collectively. The first resolution authorizes the Electric Department to incur the debt. That debt would be issued through the Tennessee Municipal Bond Fund. We have used them basically for the last eight years. Their bond closing costs are relatively low. The interest rates, it's a variable rate loan. The interest rates are currently under 2% right now. We've had that for the last several months. But they have varied anywhere from 1.5% up to 4.25% over the past eight years. The second resolution, which is item 12, authorizes the city to execute those loan documents. And then the third resolution that I mentioned, which is item 13, states intended that the debt would be repaid from the revenue of the Electric Department. But I would ask you to consider all those collectively.
Make a motion to consider items 11, 12, and 13 as one item, so then we can vote on that.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to consider these items 11, 12, 13 collectively. Any questions or comments? All right. We'll vote on that motion.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. So, we will now collectively, I guess, we now do vote on these, all three. So, first, I'll ask, are there any questions regarding this, any of these, any-
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion. All right. We have a motion to-
Second.
-second, to approve.
You needed that.
Yeah.
All three at once, and, or is there any discussion about any of-
Oh, this is a motion to approve. Yeah, all three at once.
All three at once, uh-huh. All right. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 14, consider approval of 2008 Wellness Screening Program Agreement. Mr. Pritchett.
Vice Mayor and council, my memory serves me correctly, we are, will be doing our 19th year of wellness screening this fall. I think it's a very popular program for our employees. Cookville Medical Center has agreed to provide this program for us again this year. It remains pretty much unchanged, except we are adding several additional optional tests that employees and spouses can elect to have if they choose. The cost is essentially the same that it's been in the past, only a slight increase in the cost. Subject to your approval, it's scheduled for October 14th and 15th at the, at the Water Department facility in South Jefferson, and we recommend your approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve this Wellness Screening Program?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion or questions you might have of Mr. Pritchett regarding this screening?
I think all of us, as a council, are encouraging our employees to continue to participate in this. I know it's my third, it's going to be my third wellness screening, but I think it's good for us all to participate. It's a good way for us to be able to monitor our health, to make sure our employees are healthy. And obviously, we're doing really well as far as our health is concerned. We just like to continue that track. And there's a lot of things on here, some of these costs that the city's willing to pay to help you maintain your health. So, we encourage each of you to participate as the costs of these items are being paid by us. And we just want to make sure that we continue to encourage you to do that and participate.
Well, I've always gone on record for health screening, because in a normal health screening, my son was, a disease was discovered with my son that had he not had that normal screening, it would have been months before he would have been seen by a doctor. He'd had a normal physical in August, and in October, he did a health screening, and it was discovered in that amount of time. And nobody wants to hear bad news from a health screen like this, but if you catch it at the beginning, then it can be managed. And I really appreciate the fact that the city of Cookeville has been so supportive of this and has done it for so many years running. And appreciate being associated with a group of people that value their employees and citizens.
Well, like most other employers, too, our workforce is aging, and so it becomes more important as we age.
Yes, that's very important. This, I'm asking you, of course, off the cuff, it'd be hard to tell you, about how many of the employees, how many of us participate, an average number?
We usually have about 2/3 of our employees participate.
All right. That's pretty good.
And usually, between 75 and 100 spouses. It's very popular. Second, I only do Christmas luncheon.
And after-Christmas luncheon.
That's what we do, the screening now, because Christmas is December.
Some of those employees that don't participate are already in some sort of medical-
Right.
-thing where they're seeing a doctor regularly, too, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other comments, any comments or questions from the audience? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 15, consider appointment of the NIMS Coordinator for the city of Cookeville, Mr. Shipley. And NIMS means National Incident Management System.
That's correct. I got another name for it, but I better not say. The NIMS program system was created by Homeland Security Presidential Directive Number 5 and Number 8. And the city of Cookeville adopted the system in September of 2005. This year, the requirement is the appointment of a NIMS Coordinator. And NIMS verification and compliance is being verified for all 2008 federal grant awards, and it's required for any future federal grants. Chief Kendrick has agreed to serve as the city of Cookeville's NIMS Coordinator, and that is my recommendation.
All right. We have-
It was voted on by his peers.
Yes, I think so.
He did one of those military volunteers.
Should Chief Terry be Assistant Director of that?
Yeah.
I think he got him with a, I think he got him with a taser to get him to volunteer.
Motion to approve.
Second. All right. We have a motion, second, to appoint Chief Kendrick as this NIMS Coordinator. Any more comments or questions? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Now, item 16.
unanimous.
Yeah. Item 16, consider approval of a tri-party agreement between TCU, TVA, and the city providing for an interruptible power program. Mr. Peake.
Vice Mayor and council, as the Vice Mayor mentioned, this is a 5MR program, basically standing for five-minute response. It's an interruptible, interruptible program that TCU, the Board of Regents, TVA, and the city of Cookeville Electric System have been working on for a long time. Tennessee Tech is now ready to get this approved. Basically, TCU has eight megawatts of generation on campus. They are, they are capable of feeding the entire campus. So, with this arrangement, they'll be able to get monthly power bill credits. Should TVA need to suspend or need additional power, they can electronically contact a group that's handling this for Tennessee Tech. Everything's done electronically. The generators are started. The load is taken off the grid. And again, for that benefit, TVA will pay them monthly credits of $4 per KW. Probably a- probably a credit in a neighborhood of twenty to twenty-four thousand dollars or so a month for Tech, and helps them pay for that generation. And it's a really good deal for TVA as well, because that's a lot cheaper than going out on the open market or building additional generating capacity to serve those needs. They have these type of agreements in place all around. A few years ago, colleges and universities were added to that mix. Tech is all, has been on a interruptible program for a few years now. It's called Flat Price Interruptible. This gives them a little better credit, and it's a fifteen-year contract, and I'd recommend your approval.
All right.
Move approval.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this item. Just a question, are there other organizations, big organizations such as Tennessee Tech that would be in our area that kind of, that participate in this type?
Yes, Vice Mayor, there, there are others that would be eligible. You might look at some of the bullet notes, it's, you gotta have a minimum total contract of greater than a thousand KW, so that does, that does limit it to large manufacturers. We've had Fleet Guard for years was on an interruptible rate and others. And I, I think you'll probably see requests from some of those folks, probably in the, in the near future.
The hospital use that kind of power? And can they be on something like...
Hospitals don't qualify, I don't think. They, they do have generation at the hospital, but they don't qualify for this program, to my knowledge. But I will, I'll verify that.
Any other questions or comments from council? Any questions from the audience or comments? If not, cast your vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
And the next item, Mr. Peak also, will consider approval of an agreement between the city and TVA amending the power contract to provide arrangements as necessary with respect to the city providing service to TCU under the five-minute agreement.
Yeah, this, this is really a housekeeping-type agreement between the city of Cookeville and TVA, which just provides for the billing to all be set up in our current power contract. It amends our contract that's, that's been in place since nineteen forty-four, amended several times since that, since that initial contract, but it also allows TVA to monitor and read their electric meter electronically. Just when they, when they do call for a suspension, they want to see that load lead the system. So, again, it's a housekeeping item, and I'd recommend your approval.
Do I hear a motion and a second to...
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this item. Any questions or comments from council? Any questions, comments from audience? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item eighteen, consider awarding the following bids to the police department. Chief Bob Terry.
Vice Mayor and Council, we recently solicited and opened bids for vehicles, uniforms, and miscellaneous emergency equipment that I could, I'd like to present them to you collectively. The low bid on the police cars was Carlin Motor Company, at a bid of nineteen thousand five hundred, nineteen thousand six hundred and fifty-six dollars and ninety-eight cents. The, and I can go through each one of these one by one if you want to, or you can, you can see how the bids stacked up. The second one would be K's uniforms in that category, Galls Equipment, another one, and the emergency equipment, the low bid was Brooks Equipment out of Florida. And I would recommend your approval.
Do I hear a motion to...
Move approval.
Accept these items. All right, we have a motion and a second to accept these items. Does council have questions or comments about these bids?
Under the emergency equipment, are those the LEDs on top, or are those the old style?
Those would be LEDs.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the audience? If not, please vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Vice Mayor, if I could, while I'm at the lectern, I'd like to talk about the awards up to your, to your right. This past week, the Captain Maxwell and Sergeant Randy Brown went to Nashville, to the Governor's Highway Safety Annual Meeting, where they have a, what they call a law enforcement challenge. And last year and this year, both the Cookeville Police Department finished third place in our category of our department size, and it's basically about the police department's traffic program. This is, I looked, it's past...
Can't come back home.
Their efforts were judged mainly on the contents of that book. It's, it's a very thorough document that covers everything from DUI enforcement to citations and just a laundry list of things that the whole department does collectively, and the Traffic Division puts all its information together, so it's, it's not just a single effort from them. But the book is a real difficult piece of work to put together, and they spend a lot of time doing it, and they're immensely proud of it, and we are, too, with their third-place finish. The other two awards are for child safety seat checkpoints and installing booster seats and child seats. One of the awards they were giving it from my Harry Medical College for the number of seats that they, they put out in the course of the year, which totaled, a total of four hundred and fifteen seats were either corrected or given away. We've given away more child safety seats that were donated to us through that program to more people than anybody in middle Tennessee. The other one is the Governor's Highway Traffic Safety Award for the Child Safety Seat Belt Program itself. And we take a lot of pride in that, and I don't think there's anything we do on a regular basis that gets any more attention, that has any more public relations value. And the mantra, of course, for police departments all across the country is to save lives and protect property, and I don't think you could have a higher calling than to save a child's life by doing that. So they're very diligent with it, and people that don't have young, young children that use these, these devices, when we send our guys to school, it's a very intense school, and it lasts quite a long time, and they all come back with a profound sense of appreciation, because they have learned how to make anything that's on the market work. They also take a lot of seats out of the service that are on the recall list when they find them. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, but I wanted to bring that to your attention. It's a, it's a pretty good, it's a pretty high honor.
Well, we appreciate your hard work and...
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
...in our city so well. We're very proud of our police department. Very, very good. All right, we've come to the time where the audience, if they have any comments or questions for us, we would entertain those at this time.
Next time.
Next time, okay, you have a time. A couple of things, if you have seen tonight's local paper, the Chief Kendrick and his department are gonna have, they're gonna have a student fire academy class, and I would encourage you to read about that, and especially those people in the audience, our TV audience, I hope they're listening, that they might look at that. Some of us have taken that course, and it is, what was the adjective I used, exhilarating? It's very, it's very hard, but it's fun, it's fun. And so we encourage you to seriously look at that as something that you might do, because you learn a lot that goes on in our community. And I think maybe the police department is going to have a student police academy. Are they gonna have a, a course possibly? Are they looking at it?
We're, we're gonna put one together. We're gonna have one.
Okay, you are gonna have one, so also, and the police student academy is very good also. And let's see...
Fall Fun Fest.
Fall Fun Fest, yes. Fall Fun Fest is, you know, starts tomorrow evening, and tomorrow night, Saturday, Saturday evening, so be sure and take advantage of that entertainment. And today, Mr. Rick Woods and myself went to Nashville and got our three hundred thousand dollar check from, from the governor and our environmental and conservation department that we will use with Dogwood Park. So we're very proud of that.
Why did you sign the back of that?
Says four deposit only.
So, anyway, we, we think we're moving right along with the progress in our city, and we're very proud of it. We certainly do appreciate the citizens, being their understanding of, when we have a lot of work going on on streets with sidewalks and repair, and, and so we hope that everybody will stay safe and, and have a good weekend. Any comments?
See everybody at Fall Fun Fest.
All right. If no further comments, meeting is adjourned.